And Paul, you got to do your thing on reading the COVID directions.
I have a question on this. The board just refers to the statement without reading it all, but putting it in the minutes. Are we required to read the entire statement or just make reference to it?
I have been following the lead of the Board of Selectmen and they essentially read those first three lines. We don't get to four, but we essentially read those first through three at each meeting.
One and two.
What Tom said is they do the alternative public access numbers one, two, and three. They do the first one as the introduction and then numbers one, two, and three, and they skip four.
As I said, I keep threatening to steal Megan English-Grogas script and I will write that down again. And we'll take a look at that and see the script she's... I'm just trying to be consistent with the folks who I'm working with on a pretty regular basis. I don't know exactly what the conservation, the ZVA is doing. Not at their meetings specifically, but at these other meetings. But you know, because where we're at, we do our best to let folks know that if they got something to say, they need to... Probably the principal reason why we go through all that stuff. So if you would, and I appreciate you doing that through paragraph three. And then we're off to the races.
Interesting because for the Decision Management Committee meeting, we do not have a recorder. And we are not televised. We just read it. A little different there than the planning board.
So when I'm at the Transportation Management Committee meeting on Thursday night, I'm just on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, very well.
All right. In accordance with the Governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the September 8th, 2020 public meeting of the Falmouth Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to the meeting shall be provided in the following manner. One, the meeting will be televised on Falmouth Committee television. Two, real-time public comment can be addressed by the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the Chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points in the meeting. Zoom login instructions. Instructions in the meeting link for this specific meeting can be found at the following web address: http://www.falmouthmass.us/1112/planningboard. Please plan on 10 to 15 minutes of preparation time to log in. Though it may be less if you have previously used Zoom on the device you'll be using to access the meeting. Three, additional public comments may be sent in advance of the meeting to the planning@falmouthma.gov at least five hours prior to the beginning of the meeting. Documents and audio or video files may be submitted by email. Submitted email comments and documents will be made a part of the meeting record. It may be read into the record, summarized, or displayed during the meeting at the discretion of the Chair.
Thank you, Paul. And now we go on to the minutes and you're on again, Paul.
This time I do not recommend reading of the minutes of... or approval of the minutes of August 18th. I'd like to discuss it briefly.
Do you want to discuss it now?
If that's possible.
Yes, of course.
My understanding, the minutes are not verbatim minutes. And the minutes of this particular meeting include two emails from a resident of Woods Hole in its entirety. And it goes to the entire reasons why he's objecting to a particular project. What I'd like to consider is if I can briefly summarize that and submit that as part of the record without having to read the entire two emails in their entirety before recording approval of the minutes. Comments, please.
I think that is perfectly advisable to do and just simply refer to it that those comments will be in our file because they were very lengthy. What about the rest of the board?
They don't usually include the letters.
No. No, correspondence is not included in the minutes.
Right.
Reference to correspondence is. So I would move to strike the aforementioned letters from the minutes.
And just simply reference them, Bob? Or not even reference them? Yeah, reference them. Tom, you have a comment?
Yes, the... as we've talked about before, the minutes are not a transcription. It's simply who attended, who spoke, and the bullet points of their statement. So in the case of someone who submitted comments through chat, comments from chat from Citizen X, here are their four bullet points. That's perfectly appropriate for the minutes.
Okay. Paul, would you like... was there anything else to be changed in those minutes?
No, I think that's fine. But at the present time, it consumes about 25% of the minutes and it doesn't seem to be appropriate to be included in there.
Do you want to table them for now until they're re-edited?
I recommend tabling until next week and I'll prepare a draft minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. May I have a vote on that? Show of hands, please. Okay, we're all in favor of tabling till next week. Thank you, Paul. That also gives guidance for future any conclusions. Thank you. First on our agenda is an approval not required plan. The applicant, partition commissioner Edward Foley Vaughan Esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust, plan of land to create three new lots replacing seven existing lots located at 336 Old Barnstable Road. Map numbers 2806003000-006 and Falmouth Engineering is the engineering firm of record. And this is the one where Mr. Wall wished to speak to it, Tom.
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair. So this is an A&R and the A&R and we're going to elevate with the Chair's permission. Mike Borselli, who drew the plan, and Brian Wall, the attorney representing the property owners. From the perspective of an A&R plan, the only thing that is the planning board's direct role in this is does a lot have frontage on a way? And both of these lots that we're looking at have frontage on a way. But in the requirements under the planning board subdivision regulation, or what's in an A&R plan, includes streets, current and proposed. And because this is an existing subdivision, Adeline Way, and it's in the midst of these two A&R logs, I think we need to include that information in the plan. Mike submitted the plan on Thursday before the deadline. We looked at it over the Friday or so. And so they're actually redrawing the plan as we speak. But they both wanted to get the gist of the board on what's up and sort of explain some of the... With that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Has everybody looked at this plan so that we have a basis on which to go? Okay. So, welcome, Mike, and welcome Attorney Wall. And you wanted to say something specific to the plan, I assume, so please be recognized and do so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney. And I represent the applicant Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of the OBR Realty Trust. And with me tonight is Mike Borselli of Falmouth Engineering. And so what I thought I would do is if I could take just a few minutes and give you a brief background of this. As the planner was saying, when an A&R plan is presented, it's usually just a straightforward question of do the lots have area and frontage? And that's exactly what is at issue here tonight. And we believe that these lots do have area and frontage. But I think it's important for you to understand the background of why the commissioner is involved and what's this all about. So if I could have just two or three minutes, I think I can explain it to the board. So the property at issue is at 336 Old Barnstable Road. It's approximately seven and a half acres in size. It is owned by several... I'm sorry, Mr. Fox had a hand up.
Can we see the plan? Can someone share the plan with us?
Yeah, Mike, will you... you got the plan on your screen, Mike Borselli?
Yes, I can do that.
Please.
It'd be nice to see it. Sorry.
Yeah, we were going to show it to you. I just was going to get the background, but that's fine. We'll put it up on the... You can look at that while I'm talking.
One second. You should be able to see it now.
Yes, we can. Thank you, Mike.
So as I was saying, it's a parcel of land on Old Barnstable Road. And it's... the plan doesn't show this sub-issue. But the land on the right-hand side, if you're looking at it, is actually owned by... I'm sorry, the left-hand side is owned by Mr. Rainey, the OBR Trust. And the large parcel is owned by Mr. Rainey and all of his siblings who inherited it from their parents when the parents passed away. The siblings do not get along at all, and that's a bit of an understatement. And so the property is sitting there without any ability to have anything done with it. So my client, Mr. Rainey, filed an action in the land court. It's called a petition to partition, but it's basically an action to have the court take authority through a person named a commissioner who acts in the best interest of all the parties. And normally what happens is the commissioner puts the property on the market, sells the property, and then rides up the proceeds amongst the people that own the property. And that's exactly how this commissioner, Mr. Foley Vaughan, started out. However, there was no interest in the property as far as buyers are concerned. And the reason for that is, is that at the very back of the property, the farthest area away from Barnstable Road, the Rainey's parents, Mr. Rainey illegally dumped things and materials and roots back there. And there's actually, the DEP took action. There's an enforcement order that requires the dump to be either remediated by being removed from the property and clean fill brought in, or having it covered in an environmentally sensitive manner. And to do either one takes a lot of money. It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So when Mr. Vaughan, the commissioner appointed by the land court, put the property on the market, no buyers were interested for this obvious reason. So what we decided to do is to try to come up with a creative approach. And what we want to do is to subdivide the land in order to create a back lot that will be severed. That will... that's where the dump will be. And then to sell the lots in the front in order to raise money to clean up the dump. And we're going to leave an easement to get over the land that is subdivided so that my client will have access to clean up the dump after this is all done. It's a little bit complicated because what happened, we had to form... My client is going to take the land that he owns himself through this trust, which is where the structure is shown on the property. That's actually a separate lot from the back parcel. He's going to contribute his land, divide all of the other land, and then take some of it back out. And the reason why that's relevant is it explains why or how we're going forward with this A&R as opposed to just coming in with a subdivision. We will be coming in with a subdivision that will show the backland divided further. And if Mike Borselli could kind of point to where the cul-de-sac is going to be, you can kind of see that what we're going to do is there's a road that we're proposing to go in. And where Mike is circling with his cursor, that's going to be the cul-de-sac that will provide frontage for some more lots in the back. Why didn't we come in with a definitive or preliminary plan for the whole thing? The reason has to do with the money and with what I just described is that Mr. Rainey, my client, is contributing his house lot to the overall effort because there was not enough frontage to subdivide the back the way that we want to. So we're asking for the A&R approval so that when presumably the whole approval is obtained, these lots would be available without being subject to the covenants that the planning board will be putting on for construction of the road. That enables the raising of money to then do the development, which would then raise more money, which would then facilitate cleaning up the dump. So I know that's probably a lot to hear about an A&R plan. But I wanted to tell you that we're seeking to have this plan approved, again, kind of for so-called money reasons. And then shortly after this is approved, we will be coming back before you with a preliminary plan showing all of the lots and seeking your input on that. And if we get approval of the preliminary, we'll be following it with a definitive plan. So that's the kind of complicated background behind what's a simple question for the board tonight, which is do the lots have adequate area and frontage, which we contend that they do? That's the background. I turned it over to Mr. Borselli at this point to give some of the technical review of the plan. And we're obviously available for any questions.
Thank you. For the record, Mike Borselli, Falmouth Engineering. I'd like to draw your attention to some very fine lines that you can't see unless you zoom in because they're dotted. Do you see these dotted lines?
We can see them, Mike.
But that's an old... just try to remember that. And now I'm going to share another plan with you, which is the current plan that is currently on record. So those dotted lines are represented... are representing this cluster subdivision that the planning board endorsed back in 1998. So this is the current configuration with the open space in the area back here where the dump is. I only show you that for reference. Now I'm going to go back to the plan of record, which has those same lines but dotted because they will be... they are actually no longer... if this is endorsed, they will no longer be the lines of record. So the two lots that we're creating that have frontage on Old Barnstable Road are currently described as Lot A, having 49,100 square feet, having the required 100 feet of frontage, and having the required lot width, which is demonstrated by this circle of 150 feet. So adequate access on Old Barnstable Road, frontage and lot width. Similarly with Lot B, adequate frontage, 106 feet, access, and the lot width is demonstrated in the rear. These lots currently described as Lot A, B, and C. And one of the things that Mr. Bott alluded to was there's a couple of changes that we want to make to the plan. One of which is to... the plan that ultimately gets endorsed, if you see to endorsing it, would be... these lots would be known as Lot 1, 2, and Lot Triple Zero. That is at the advice of the Town Assessor's Office. Trish Fabouli wants to make the lot numbers consistent for her records so that there's a history of how this land was developed through time. So another comment that Mr. Bott had made was he thinks we should still label Adeline's Way in some way that at least alerts you to the fact that there is currently on as a paper road, a road known as Adeline's Way. So we were going to add that note to the plan as well so that it is consistent with this road name, Adeline's Way. So those minor edits to the plan have yet to be performed. But we wanted to at least let... we had filed and we wanted to have a discussion. What you'll see in the near future is this lot developed to approximately where I'm moving my mouse with two additional lots that will have frontage on a completed cul-de-sac here. The cul-de-sac will come in and meet all of the geometry of your subdivision regulations. And the two additional lots will also have the required frontage area and lot width. But the first step, as Mr. Wall had suggested, was to create two lots that do not require the construction of a road to be... provide the access. So I'm hoping I summed that up. And we're both here for questions.
Thank you, Mike. I do have a question. And in a way, it's agreeing with Tom Bott that Adeline's Way should be put in there because that is the with fur roadway. And it would also, it appears, be access to the cul-de-sac that would then give access to two additional lots. Is my assumption correct?
It is. There's a subtle difference in the alignment of the actual road layout of the former Adeline's Way. If you look very closely, the cul-de-sac was here, if you can see the dotted lines. It'll now be here. But in all other means, it's the same. So we were going to label this as, you know, to make it clear that that is Adeline's Way.
Okay. Does that make sense to the rest of the board?
Adeline's Way coming off of Old Barnstable.
Old Barnstable.
And actually sort of bifurcating what's there now in the front.
Yes. But that... that Adeline's Way would be access to the new cul-de-sac that would provide frontage to two additional lots.
Got it.
The other question I would have, Mike, from your description of it, is the area where there was dumping in the back, it appears is going to be almost kept in perpetuity as not developable? Is that a fair assumption when you moved your mouse showing that the other two lots are not going to be all the way back?
That's correct. The other two lots are going to terminate at the point well outside the dump area, but at a place that provides enough area to meet the zoning bylaw. Realizing that Adeline's Way was a planned residential development with smaller than, you know, smaller lots. These lots will be as required under the zoning, which is a minimum lot size of 45,000 square feet.
Okay.
The remaining land will be not a building lot at the very back of the parcel.
Okay. It's not our business as to what you're going to do with that and how long it's going to take to clean that up or cap it, however you do it, in regard to this decision that we're about to make. Does anybody else on the board have any questions? And mind you, I cannot see you because we're screen sharing.
Yeah, I do.
Unshare it?
Bob?
Yeah. What I'm looking at, what we're calling Adeline's Way, is that currently there? Is there anything there? Is that a driveway or?
What it is, I walked it, is back when this was endorsed, they started construction by clearing right of way, stripped the top soil, installed a drain, a road drain in a hydrant. But there, if you walk out here now, they're in the middle of the woods. So it doesn't... it's not accessible.
So it's not accessible now. How long is it? What's the length of that till you get to the new cul-de-sac?
To here?
Yeah.
It is... I have to scale it if you bear with me.
Yeah, sure.
So if I could just interject for a moment, the principal thing I wanted, because our subdivision regulations, which identifies the contents for an A&R plan under 30512E4, are the lines in existing proposed streets, ways, and easements within the subdivision. So because it's a requirement in our regulations, I just wanted to have this stretch that 44 feet wide with a label on this as Adeline's Way. Just to make sure we're consistent with our regulations in endorsing the plan. But as we talked about before, both lots have frontage on an existing way. They qualify for the A&R endorsement, even with all the backstory about what's going on in the rest of the property. I just wanted that label for Adeline's Way. And just as a general rule, when we get a plan in and it has things like Lot A and Lot B on it, I always want to make sure that the plan that gets endorsed at the registry is going to have the same lot numbers that the assessor is going to use. So I always try to head those things off by using that lot number the assessor is going to use. It makes it just clear for what's registered at the Registry of Ds and what'll be in the town's records as well. So those are my two points. Lot numbers go the way.
So what you're recommending, Tom, is that we don't make any decision on this tonight. We asked them to go back, relabel this, lots one and two, and put Adeline's Way on there.
Yep, and we'll see them on the 22nd.
Okay. Fair enough.
Sure. And to answer the question that was just asked, the length of the road to the center of the cul-de-sac was designed specifically to be just under 500 linear feet. It's like 480 linear feet.
Okay, so we're looking at a driveway as opposed to a road then?
It'll be a road by construction standards. It'll have pavement of 22 feet wide.
Okay.
It'll meet the geometry of requirement in the subdivision for the actual cul-de-sac for the radii. And it'll then allow for proper, you know, emergency vehicle turnaround. And it'll also provide the payment and access for the two other lots that are yet to be shown on a plan.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we don't end up endorsing something that's going to come back and bite us later because we weren't thinking of road widths and turnarounds and all that kind of stuff, so.
No, what you're going to see next is a preliminary subdivision plan demonstrating all of those things.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
The plan provided by the town shows topography, roughly elevation 48 along Adeline's Way. Until it gets in the back and then it goes down to 28 feet. So it's quite a depression back there. Was that the area where the debris was dumped?
Yes.
It was covered? Or is there another area where that debris was?
It's as you described, if I could, in the back where the topography had dropped.
Well, if they dumped things, they must have covered it. Is that correct?
Yes. But, you know, they reshaped it. So the town topography, if that's what you're referring to, which will show on the preliminary plan when we file it, will demonstrate what the current ground contours are.
Will it also show the extent of the debris?
There is a line on a plan that I will compile to the preliminary plan that'll show the limits of the dump area. Thank you.
If I may, this is Brian Wall speaking. Could I further address a comment that Mr....
Of course, Mr. Wall. Yes, please, Mr. Wall.
Thank you. Mr. Dryer, the dump, as I understand it, was, I think, tree roots and other things. And it is kind of quote-unquote "covered", but the DEP order that I referenced requires a special kind of covering that's environmentally sound so that rainwater can't get in there so that whatever pollutants might exist can't leach out. And so it's technically covered. If you went out there, you might not be able to know that it was a dump. But it has to be covered in a very special way. And that's what's going to cost all the money.
So it'll be capped like a landfill, essentially.
Exactly.
Right.
Has there been a study on that to show what's there?
So I can answer that. So I can answer that kind of third-hand. I was not personally involved. I didn't represent the client at that time. But a file was turned over to me by the client where there was a tremendous amount of involvement by the state DEP that ultimately ended in this kind of thing. I'll call it a remediation order. And it's a very detailed order that's several pages in length. But as I had mentioned earlier in my presentation, it requires the dump to be either remedied by emptying it out and bringing in clean fill and disposing of everything in there at another proper lawful location or capping it, as the town planner said, in a certain environmental way. And that's the idea here, is to generate the money through the sale of these four lots and then reserve an easement to get back to what will be an unbuildable lot. And then after they get the money, they can comply with that DEP order.
Mr. Wall? I, John?
Yes, I have a question, please.
Yes.
Regarding the DEP, is, do they have legal action on this property? I mean, what you're showing on the plan, what part of the property? Is there an attachment? Is there a freeze order? And also, Mr. Wall, before you say what you think is back there, you probably should do a little bit more research. But I'd like to know how much this property is. Is there enforcement action by a DEP that covers all of Lot Three or? I'm not sure what's going on here.
Well, there's no legal action in the sense of a court action. There was an administrative enforcement proceeding at the DEP that resulted in this enforcement order that affects the land that is subject to the subdivision. There's no attachment. There's nothing recorded at the registry regarding that. The idea is, is to basically say it simply carve off the back and sever the dump from the other land. That would then enable it to be purchased because nobody wants to buy it right now because and I should say this, no one asked this question, but the reason why the client doesn't want to go forward with the previously approved cluster subdivision is because each lot owner would still have an interest in the back area. And if they were to buy the lot, they would become subject to that DEP enforcement order. And so the plan here is to carve off the back, subdivide the front, sell the front, and then address that enforcement order that is outstanding.
Well, we've gone way beyond this A and R plan here, which supposed to be a simple thing. But I would recommend, when you do come back with your definitive plan, that you'd be able to answer these questions and show it on the plan. There must be, the DEP did this for a reason. And I want to know if it encompasses all the land, and if it doesn't, where does it start? Where does it stop? And maybe you can also show us the court order from the DEP.
Okay.
But for now, we're just doing a simple A and R plan.
Right, but I'm taking notes, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to go forward in this manner is to get these questions, and we're gonna answer all of them. So I will answer those, Mr. Drew.
I personally also, Mr. Wall, would like to know whether there is town water that could be provided to these house lots, or whether they would be expected to be on well water.
I can answer that. Town water is available on all parts of the road, and the ultimate plan, definitive plan, will show a water main to the new cul-de-sac with a hydrant, and then water services to the four lots.
Thank you, Mike. I should have known because you said there was a hydrant in there.
Yes, there's actually already a water main in there.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, because that would be important too. Okay, anybody else?
We'll see on the twenty-second.
I do have a question, but it's not about the A and R. That's very straightforward. I can't imagine or figure out what the configuration of the cul-de-sac would be that would give a hundred-foot frontage to both of the back lots.
They only need sixty.
Sixty? Even so.
On a cul-de-sac.
Well, if the lot, where it shows where the cul-de-sac is going to be, if that lot is a little over a hundred feet wide and you divide it in half to each of the lots, you're not going to get sixty feet available.
It's on the circumference.
Sure an engineer can figure that out.
Zoom in, zoom into the fine print and show where the lot divisions with sixty feet on the old cul-de-sac. I can see it.
Yeah, see how small that is, Charlotte, the circle there?
I do see how small that is, but that would be an oblong cul-de-sac.
Well, I would like to say you will, there's a plan coming that'll show this cul-de-sac completed. And the frontage for two lots that would, I'm tracing where it will be, is more than adequate to provide sixty feet of frontage for each lot. And when we file the preliminary, that will become very clear to you.
Okay.
Because it'll be dimensioned.
Okay, thanks, y'all. We'll see you then on the twenty-second with the changes to this that have been requested.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're moving on. Planning Board decision, the applicant Woods Hole Partners LLC, definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision with four hundred and forty-five linear foot roadway located at five thirty-three through five thirty-nine Woods Hole Road, Cape and Islands Engineering. And I don't recall whether we actually closed the hearing on this. And Jim is recusing himself. Does anybody recall whether we closed the hearing at our last meeting?
Chairman, I don't think the hearing was closed, but I do have
I don't believe it was.
Okay, so that's two people who should know, and I have no memory as to whether we closed it or not, so. I think we've got enough information on this. And we certainly allowed testimony on it. May I have a motion at this point then to close the hearing?
Madam Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Amet.
Thanks very much. While the hearing is still open, I'd like to just make a comment about the proposed decision, which I reviewed a couple of days ago. And my only suggestion is that there be a reference made to the requirement for a covenant or a bond. There is a reference to a bond or covenant in the last condition, but usually there would be language about the requirement that construction be secured. And I would like it to be made clear, as you all know, that the intention of the owner is to develop the property as permitted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, if allowed to do so by court, a decision that will ultimately be made. And I would like to suggest that the vision provide that the covenant shall not affect development of the five-point-four acres shown on the plan as a single lot prior to recording of the plan hereby approved, including development of such land as allowed by the Zoning Board of Appeals on June fourteen, two thousand and nineteen, Special Permit Number one fifteen dash eighteen. Now, the purpose of that is just to make it clear that the filing of this plan, the endorsement of it, the recording of a covenant at the Registry of Deeds prior to recording of the plan itself, doesn't affect the ability of the property owner to to develop the property as a single lot as it exists today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then I'm going to suggest that we do not have a complete decision that we could render tonight because that is a little bit more complex. And I would suggest that you get in touch with Tom and the two of you work out the language as to the conditions. But I would still need to be able to close the hearing tonight. So therefore, may I have a motion to close this hearing tonight?
So moved, seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions on this? May I have a show of hands? All of favor? Okay, it's six out of the six eligible, and Jim has recused himself. So please, Bob, get together with Tom, and then we will be able to see you on the twenty-second, I assume. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearings. The applicant, Cove Cottage LLC and one oh zero eight Seapit Road LLC. Special permit application to adjust boundaries of existing developed lots to create conforming frontage and septic system location outside of Wetlands buffer. A portion of the new lot being only forty feet wide located at one oh eight Seapit Road, that number thirty-two, twenty-one, zero, zero, four, zero, two, three, and thirty-two, two, one, zero, zero, five, zero, twenty-six, Holmes and McGrath. And my understanding is that Michaela is going to present this to us tonight. As you would remember, Bob Amet had presented it, and Michaela has comments on it tonight. Michaela?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I hope you guys are all doing well. So I'm just, if it's okay with you guys, I'm actually gonna share my screen. All right. So hopefully you guys can all see that. So this is the site plan. Lot two eighteen or one oh eight Seapit is the property before us for this special permit. And specifically, this is the area that we're looking at tonight. So there's a hundred feet of frontage along Reed Path, right here in yellow. They have forty-four feet of frontage along Seapit in red here. But there, before the board, for section two forty-sixty-seven D, which is lot width. So right here in green, you can see that the width of the lot is forty feet. So the bylaw specifies that in residency, the minimum lot width should be one hundred feet. Through a special permit, the board is allowed to permit a reduced lot width. But let me see if I can bring up my notes for one second. However, the planning board may not create a lot under the section with a lot less than eighty percent of the required lot width. Therefore, the minimum that the board would allow would be eighty feet. The applicant is proposing forty feet. So that is where I will let Bob kind of explain further the plans and the lot width and the special permit that he is asking for.
Bob?
Now you can hear me.
Yep.
Well, actually, the zoning bylaw provides that the minimum lot width is one hundred feet. And that means that you have to be able to draw a circle one hundred feet wide diameter on the lot. And, but there's another provision regarding minimum width. The zoning bylaw also provides that no portion of a lot may be less than fifty feet wide. And as a result, the minimum lot width for portions of the lot other than where you meet the required minimum width, hundred feet, is fifty feet wide. And eighty percent of fifty feet is forty feet, and that's what we're requesting. Now, this is not the first time that the planning board has been requested to grant a special permit exactly like this, where a portion of the lot is proposed to be forty feet wide. The case I handled that was the same issue was for Alition Quinlan on Hummingbird Hill Road. A decision was issued on September twenty-seven, two thousand and six, which for topographic reasons granted the reduction of the width for a portion of the lot to forty feet, just as we're asking in this case. I'm glad I was prepared to explain that to you. This issue was not included in the staff report, which was sent to me just this morning. But that's the answer. I think what we're doing is perfectly acceptable. And if we can, if we can get by that legal issue, I'd be happy to address the merits of this application and the reason why we asked that you grant the special permit. Are there any questions about my explanation of how the zoning bylaw allows the planning board to reduce the width to, in a case like this, to forty feet for a portion of the lot?
Jim?
Yes, can you, does the bylaw you're quoting apply? You, I heard it applied to frontage, but does it also specifically say lot width as well?
It doesn't refer to frontage. It only refers to lot width, and I believe I only referred to lot width.
Okay, all right.
So and the section of the bylaw involved is quoted in the staff report that I received, and it reads that the planning board may by special permit allow the creation of lots with less than the required lot width if topographic or other physical conditions so warrant. And then it goes on to say the planning board may not create a lot with less than eighty percent of the required lot width. So there essentially are two required lot widths. One is that you have to have a minimum width of, in this case, a hundred feet, which could be reduced, but we're not asking that. Or the other section of the required width that says that a lot can't be less than fifty feet wide, except at Corners. So here we have a strip forty feet wide, but that's exactly what the planning board approved under the same section of the bylaw in the case I cited.
Any comments for the rest of the board? Tom?
So a couple of weeks ago, we had the A and R plan that the board endorsed. I had mentioned that Town Council and I had been discussing this because there's a lot of moving parts in it. And the, and it may be that there's a circumstance prior to where the board endorsed or approved a special permit like that. But because this is such, frankly, highly unique to Falmouth, that there's a lot width, and then you can make that lot with a minimum of fifty feet and then take eighty percent of the hundred-foot lot width to get to forty feet. I just kind of wanted to talk to Frank about this sort of nesting dolls sort of scenario that we're looking at here, just so I fully understood it. Clearly, Seapit has some issues. There's a septic system that has to be replaced. And because of its proximity to the Seapit River, there really isn't a good spot on the site to do that. But because it's so unusual, even in Falmouth, I mean, the last time we had one of these, what did you say, Bob? Twelve years ago, thirteen years ago? I just, I just didn't have any ability to sort of advise the board on how that worked without having some additional consultation with Frank. We touched on this earlier, but we haven't been able to circle back around to it. So I would very much like to sort of put my heads together with Frank and then get back with Bob in the interim before we get too far down the path with this thing. It may be just fine. It may be just one of those things that Falmouth has this very unique zoning for this, but it's just, I've never seen anything like it. But there's, I'm still a young man. There's probably still plenty of things I haven't seen yet. That's my only concern, that it's probably fine, but it's just, I want to call it weird, but I just did. It's just very interesting.
If I could add, you know, the zoning bylaw has a definition of lot width. And it's in section two forty thirteen of the zoning bylaw. It says the diameter of the largest circle that can be inscribed in the lot boundaries. And that's the hundred-foot requirement which could be waived. But then the bylaw also says in section two forty sixty-seven B, no part of any lot may be less wide than fifty feet in any lot may be less wide than fifty feet in any dimension except at the corners." And that's what we're asking to be allowed to be eighty percent, and as the board has previously approved it. In terms of the merits, there's no question that what we're doing is going to be a significant improvement in terms of eliminating or reducing zoning non-conformance, as well as environmental benefit from being able to create a location on this lot where a Title V septic system out of Conservation Commission jurisdiction can replace a cesspool that serves the existing five-bedroom house within a short distance from the top of the Coastal Bank, a situation which is non-conforming not only to Conservation Commission regulations, but also to health regulations. And we have a very unusual lot laid out in nineteen-twenty-six, a land court lot, that has as its frontage, and I have to put the word "frontage" in quotes, only about fourteen feet of frontage on a sort of an arrow at the end of this Reed Path. And we're, by adjusting the lot lines, ending up with a hundred feet of frontage on Reed Path and forty feet of frontage on Seapit. So I hope that the boards sees its way clear to allow this plan and to interpret the bylaw consistent with the previous decision I'm aware of, so that we can figure out how to solve these problems. We would not be able to put the septic system where we're proposing without including that area in the one-oh-eight Seapit lot, without getting difficult to obtain, if not impossible, but possible, variance from the local Title V rule that says that a septic system has to be on the lot that it serves. So we really think this is a good solution, and I think it's something that the planning board can allow, consistent with past practice.
Thank you. Paul, you had a question or comment, and then Jim. Paul? Paul, you have to get closer to your microphone. Still having trouble hearing you, Paul. You're quite low volume.
No.
No.
Talk louder!
Turn up the volume on your computer.
What I'm making is, since you're gonna review the town council, perhaps you can review the decision that Ms. Amet referred to, with all due respect to what he has said today.
Jim?
Yeah. I would also like, when we do this, if we do, that we do reference in the findings, how many non-conformities are we creating or solving with this? This is a messed up, the houses already exist. We're doing this, we're, I think we're improving a lot on the non-conformities. So I think that needs to kind of go in the history of our decision, I think. That's what I would recommend, that in our findings, we list the non-conformities that we're, we are getting rid of.
And John?
Given, given the sensitivity of this location, if, if we are able to grant this in the future, and a new septic system goes in, would it be a denitrification system?
Can you answer that, Bob?
There aren't any plans to install a denitrification system. Keep in mind, this is outside of Conservation Commission jurisdiction. It's a very significant improvement over the existing conditions. And these houses are probably going to continue to be used seasonally, and I'm not sure that the denitrification systems are best under that circumstances, although I think John probably knows a lot more about it than I do. But no, there's not an intention to do that.
Thank you.
Charlotte?
Bob, I wonder if I could just ask you a question. What, what is the purpose of Reed Path? The piece of land that all three houses are on have an amazing amount of frontage for Nichols Road and Seapit Road, but we seem to be reduced to considering only little diagonals on Reed Path. What, what is Reed Path used for?
Well, as I said, Reed Path was laid out in nineteen-twenty-six. And although the town engineer in his referral referred to it as a paper street, I think it definitely is not what we would think of as a paper street, because it in fact exists and provides access to a house that has no frontage on any other street except Reed Path. So it is, I think, probably entirely twenty feet wide, crushed shell surface. It seems to be a firm surface. It obviously isn't constructed to any kind of current requirements. But again, it was laid out in nineteen-twenty-six, and the house at twenty-four Reed Path was constructed about nineteen-fifty. The house at one-oh-eight Seapit, which is actually only reached via Reed Path and has that quirky frontage I described of that triangle at the end of the road and only had only fourteen feet of frontage. That house was built in nineteen-seventy-two. So obviously, the town has considered Reed Path to be a street, so that that house could be built. Reed Path is listed as a, as a private street in the town's list of, of, of street sites, founded in both the nineteen-seventy-four and the nineteen-eighty-four street list. So when you ask what it's used for, it's used as a street to provide access to the house built in nineteen-seventy-two. And it's also used for access to the house that's numbered twenty-four Reed Path. That's just to the north of, of one-oh-eight. Probably with the layout as shown where all of the frontage on Reed Path would be, would go with the one-oh-eight Seapit property, there would be a new driveway off of Seapit, where there will be a hundred feet of frontage for the present twenty-four Reed Path house. And that would require a street opening permit, because Seapit is a public, public street.
Okay. I, Tom?
Well, I just to John Druly's question about a denitrification system. This is a special permit that's being requested. Massachusetts Journal gives the planning board a tremendous amount of discretion in the conditions it imposes on a special permit. So I don't think that it's necessarily out of the conversation that it would, but the type of septic system that it might be, just from a very broad perspective, because it's a special permit. And as I said, Massachusetts Journal gives the board a tremendous amount of discretion with special permits. To Bob's point, Reed Path is basically, it looks like a shell driveway that they make that access from, but it is a paper street for the purposes of frontage. So as I said, council and I had this discussion a couple of weeks ago. We've had a few other discussions about other things as well, so we'll have to circle back around to this and sort of get cracking on it. And Bob, if you could just shoot me a note about what that case is, that previous special permit?
I have the decision. I'll send you the decision.
That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So I'm gonna say a little bit here, because as I said the last time, that we're gonna be creating new non-conformities, getting rid of some old non-conformities, and creating a lot better environmental impact on the wetlands. But Jim is absolutely correct. I think it would be very important, in any decision that is rendered, if it were to be a positive decision, that we cite the different non-conformities that are already there, the non-conformities that are going to be created, that we ask, like John Druly has said, because we're saying, one of the reasons we're doing this is because we're going to reduce the impact on the wetland by allowing that, the decision to happen, that we have a D-Nite system in there, knowing full well that maybe at this time, if it's only seasonally occupied, the D-Nite doesn't necessarily work, but it does if it's used year-round. So I think we need to put all of this in the decision, because again, we have Bob citing another decision. And I don't want to pile, this is me speaking, and I don't know if it's the rest of the board, I do not want to pile, well, look what we did here, and here's another, look what we did here, because these are all strange circumstances, and I don't want to have to be reaching back and saying, well, you can't not allow this because you allowed that. I don't know whether the rest of the board agrees with that opinion or not. Pam, I see you nodding your head.
Well, I was just gonna say, it's very hard when you're dealing with non-conformity. You can't make anything more non-conform, non-conforming than it already is. So we're sort of trading off one non-conformity for another. And I, there's something about that that just doesn't, doesn't compute for me. I understand this. It's just something that we don't tend to do. We don't tend to trade off one non-conformity for another.
Yeah, and that's why I don't want it to be something you could reach back and say, well, see what you did here.
Exactly.
You must do it here, so we have to very carefully structure this as to why we did it, and that we do not want it to be looked back at as a reason that, oh, we can do that. Come on, Bob.
Thank you, Pat. First of all, we are not asking you to create a non-conformity with respect to lot, to the one-oh-eight lot. We're asking you to grant a special permit that we believe is allowed under the zoning bylaw to reduce the width of the portion of the property by twenty percent. We're not talking about a non-conformity for that. We are creating a non-conformity or changing a non-conformity on the next lot over, but that's for the zoning board of appeals to deal with, because we only have forty-three feet distance from the corner of Reed Path to the existing house at twenty-four Reed Path. And if we're going to have forty feet of width, as may be allowed by the planning board, it only leaves us with three feet to the house on the adjacent property. But that house presently straddles the property line on its other side. So it's a reduced non-conformance. I'd like to point out that if what we were doing was asking for a trade-off of non-conformances, if you will, we would be before the board of appeals and not the planning board. And the standard for changing or altering non-conformances is whether it is, whether the change or alteration is or is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformances. And by the way, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court in two thousand and nineteen issued a decision saying that a non-conformity can be intensified. And I say that only to correct what Pam said. The board can allow an increase in the non-conformity if it's not substantially more detrimental. It may in fact be a great improvement, depending on the circumstances. And there's actually a, a published article about that decision written by Kim Balin, who was the chairman of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, who not only discusses that decision, but raises the question of whether a new non-conformance can be created because of the language in the state law. But we are not really dealing with that at the planning board. Think that you can grant a special permit, but there's a lot of good reasons for you to do so. I'd also like to point out that we're dealing with existing house lots. We're not creating any new, new lots. And we're talking about a lot that already has a five-bedroom house on it, served by a cesspool near the wetlands. The planning board has an opportunity here to allow a great improvement and should be encouraging the result. And the result will be a heck of a lot better with, whether or not there's a denitrification septic system. I understand that the perfect is a great thing to strive for, but this is a very good in itself.
And Jim?
There is another solution, I think, that probably has other problems relating to the, the marketability of it, but this could be turned into a condo with exclusive uses and leaving the property lines where they are, keeping it all as one lot. Or we could, but it makes it harder to sell, they can't change them. I think it's an elegant solution, but my suggestion is another way, but I think it has, hurts the ownership of the property. Very difficult. We'd never do this again, except it's already been done. We got three houses.
Bob?
I, I think to kind of alleviate some of your concern about this setting precedent on the fact that it is a special permit, it's something that we can always fall back on, because special permits are issued in a lot of cases because of special circumstances. And I think we also have to look at the benefit to the overall public in this. With the improvement of the septic system, it is an improvement for the general welfare of the public.
I agree, Bob. Thank you. And so, Tom, we'll have the opportunity to talk with Frank before the twenty-second, and hopefully we will have a decision that we can render on the twenty-second. Does that make sense to the board, Tom?
Well, I think on the twenty-second, we're probably looking at the board recommending the staff prepare a motion. We've got to look at, and I said, there's, there's, there's a lot of moving parts here, and it's, I'm gonna say it again, it's weird, but, and it may be fine, but the board has the discretion and the special permit to put conditions to make sure that your concerns are alleviated. So we'll be talking about that with town council, around town meeting, and all the other things we got going on with the short week and town.
That's true.
So we'll be trying to do our best to get you something sort of ironed out by the twenty-second.
Okay. Bob?
I just wanted to compliment Attorney Amet on the mathematical gymnastics that he performed on this. I was really impressed with, with how that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We've been working on how to solve this family's problems for over a year and, and trying to get the whole family to understand why they couldn't do this or that, and what they might be able to do to, to solve it. I think we see this, and we are seeing it more, properties that are in another generation of ownership now. There are more owners, different families want to enjoy property. Here we have a situation with three houses that have been in this family for a long, long time, and they have these zoning problems. I mean, a lot, a house straddling a lot, that makes, those, both those lots are unmarketable. And we've come, we came up with a solution that, that I think works. And whether ultimately works is up to the planning board doing its part, and the board of appeals doing its part. But I think what both boards hopefully will do is figure out how they can say yes to this solution and not be saying we can't do it when, when it's been done in the past and, and there is support for it. And every case is unique. There will never be a case with, with these really crazy facts. The layout of, of the existing layout of lot one-oh-eight with that fourteen feet of frontage is just, you know, that's crazy. And dealing with the other problems we have. So I really appreciate your, your recognizing that it took a lot of effort.
Yeah, it did, Bob. Thank you. And we'll look to the 22nd then to continue this.
That's right.
So we have a motion from the board to continue this till the 22nd? Did I hear?
No, we didn't.
No move.
Second?
Moved in second and to continue till the 22nd. All in favor, show by raising your hand. Okay. Thank you all. Okay. So we go on to planning board discussions. The first is Blue Flag Development LLC, 836 Palmer Avenue, request for administrative approval, and Tom will speak to this. You all had this information in your packet.
Yes, if I may, I'm gonna share my screen. So I recently met with the folks at Blue Flag, Richard Craddock, his name actually isn't Rick, but it's, but I was trying to get a memo out to folks. I think what you're seeing in front of you is a detail of the plan. So the full-size plan, which is on 11 and 1/2 by 17, we know is hard for the board to see, so I blew up the plan to show you the areas that we're talking about. So in order to preserve some oaks, and actually, I'm gonna scroll down here to what, what it actually looks like on the site right now. So give me just a second to do this. So this is what we're looking at. This is the site where they want to remove four parking spaces with this very large 40-inch oak here. And the other area is this spot where there are several older trees here. So what they're requesting to do is, here in area A, is take these parking spaces and spread them out, the two that come out of here. There's one here they're squeezing in at the end of the road here. There's a second here they're squeezing in at the end of this row here, which are behind the screening and the plantings along Palmer Avenue. And then we look at the, the other spot here where these other trees are, those four spaces would be relocated, excuse me, those four places would be relocated to another along Palmer Ave, another here by those trees, and another down sort of closer to the birdhouse, and another by the maintenance shed. So they're taking those essentially six parking spaces, two and four, and just adding ones in places incrementally increasing the, the parking areas. The idea is to preserve those trees. Rick is a landscape architect by training, working as a construction super, so they want to maintain that tree and these here by taking those parking spaces and just rearranging them to incremental changes in the current parking field. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Tom. Are there any questions of the board? Okay, then I, yes, Paul?
I have a comment. We've been following this quite some time, and in the spring, we had a presentation by a representative of Blue Flag Development, because there were a lot of concerns the way the landscape was progressing. They, people were really complaining. And I asked him whether he'd come back again in the fall, and he said he would. So I think it would be nice if we had an update on that development sometime later this year and see what they're doing, because they were making a lot of changes, they hadn't put any landscaping in, and I think that would allay a lot of the fears of the neighbors. As far as this particular issue, I think it's an administrative decision. I don't think we have to spend a lot of time on it.
Charlotte?
I just, I don't have a question. I do have a comment, because I have heard from the fellow who's the president of the association, who's looking over this for the benefit of the other homeowners who are affected by this, and they continue to be upset. And I'd just like to say, one of their points of upsettedness is that the builders have not, the developers have not kept in touch with the abutters, they are not keeping them informed. And yet they are proposing, it's nice to see that they're trying to save trees, sort of late in the day, but I'm glad that they're trying to do that. But I do wish that they, that they would be more attentive to the people whose lives they're disrupting as they go through this. I think the fellow who came last to speak to us called it the ugly duckling phase. Well, it really is. I drive by there, a few weeks ago, I drove in and spoke with some people who were working there. They pointed out trees of a pretty good size that have been delivered and will be planted, and they have every intention of making it a better-looking thing than it is now, but it's alarming looking now, and the neighbors are alarmed. And I think that they should be trying to work with the neighbors continuously, as they said they would.
Okay, but this is, yes, John? John, unmute.
I would say there's a concern about what's going on at the site. Instead of them coming to visit us again, maybe we could do a site visit there in six weeks or so, end of October, first of November, just, just as a thought.
Good thought. I think if we however give Tom administrative authority here, he's the point man who can make these points too, to the people there. Does that make sense? I mean, we can't go in as a board and individually say, hey, you know, Tom would be the liaison in that. Does that make sense to you all too? Charlotte?
Not to me. I think if they had maintained better relationship with their abutters, it would make very good sense. I certainly trust Pam. But I, I think that it's a good idea that they, they continue to feel answerable to the board.
Okay, Tom?
I was gonna suggest that I'll reach out to Brad Guidi, who's the fellow who we spoke with last time, and let him know that the board would like another update at the end of October. And perhaps we could arrange a site visit for that day, perhaps the October 27th meeting. Have Brad come down, arrange a, 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 a meeting with the neighbors, give the neighbors an update, do a site visit with the board, and then bring it to the meeting that evening.
Sounds reasonable. About the rest of the board, Bob?
How many subdivisions or major projects do we call people in to give us a report on? And do we go visit while it's under construction?
Not very many.
We don't?
To me, the only reason why this keeps coming up is because it's very visible. And they're, they're in the process of building something, and you gotta let them build it. And we have the recourse of when it is, they, in order to get it approved, it has to meet the conditions that we set. And this bit of going back at them all the time, because it looks ugly, and it's, it's not what, it's not beautiful right now, is ridiculous. We don't do this for any other project. I mean, there are subdivisions going all over the place, and you never drive down those little roads and look at how the trees have all been cut and all the other conditions that arise. And then when it's done, everybody goes, oh, wow, this is beautiful. And I just think you're kind of punishing these people because it's visible. And I, I think we should get off of it myself.
Well, I think we also have to know that this glamp ground isn't gonna work unless they make it beautiful.
Right, exactly. It's in their monetary benefit to make it look good and be attractive. Otherwise, it's not gonna work for them.
Charlotte?
I accept your criticism, Bob. I think you've made a very good point. But certainly, and I haven't been on the board very long, but I haven't approved a trailer park before. I don't think it's an ordinary development. It's an extraordinary development. So it's, it's not unusual that we would pay extraordinary attention to it.
I look at it as a project.
Before?
I look at it as a project.
Right. Indeed, it is. It's a trailer park project, and that makes it unique.
As opposed to housing projects.
Right.
I mean, a, a, a project is a project. They all go through these, you should see the site that I'm working on right now. I mean, if people are coming at us all the time and saying, oh, jeez, you know, you cut down these trees, and it's all sand and dirt, and I mean, you know, come on. I mean, it's, it's construction. It's the, the way it is. And to come back at these people all the time and want to report, that's time and money on their part. I, I just don't think it's right.
Tom?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I've had a number of conversations with folks who've asked about it. In fact, I think I've written at least one letter and one email about it. And, and one of the interesting things when this project started, before this project started, I was on the site and I met with the Tessiers who owned the property for a generation. And they said when they did this, what, put it up for sale, they had, I think, five offers. Four of them were for condos, and one was for the campground, not a trailer park, but a campground. And the Tessiers basically took less money, they didn't take the highest monetary offer, because they felt like, well, this is our legacy, that we have a campground here that we operated for years, and certainly a whole, it's not your, your, your mother Tessiers campground anymore. But to their credit, they took, you know, this decision to sort of preserve their legacy in stainless steel, rather than, you know, condos and things like that. So a lot of credit to the Tessiers, and frankly, to Blue Flag, they've been very responsive. We ask them for things. And I, and, and from my perspective, I, I think the folks from Blue Flag are, are very proud of what they're doing out there, and I, I'll talk to Brad, but I don't think he's gonna have an objection to, to coming down and visiting and, and, and talking about what's going on.
So at, at that point, Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. While I generally agree with what Bob has said, the representative said he would come back at appropriate time. I don't think a site is necessary. I don't have to get into any kind of detail or extra cost for the developer. He offered to come in and show where he was with the landscaping at the appropriate time. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. If he came in for one evening, or tied in on Zoom, or whenever it is, and just told us where he's going with that. I think that way allays, allays some fears of the neighbor. But I agree, we're not trying to make it more difficult, we're not trying to get out and control the project. But he had offered to come in when things were looking a lot better, whether that's in October or February, I don't know. But he offered to do that at some point in time.
Bob?
I think you also have to consider the historic times we're living in too.
Yeah.
I mean, it, doing construction right now isn't easy. I, I, I know just from, from doing it. I mean, we're, we're working with smaller crews and materials that are in short supply. Try getting some certain materials right now. It's difficult. So I, I think we just, we just lay off them a bit. It will come out nice. They'll do what they said they were gonna do, and a hundred years from now, who knows?
Can we have a motion, please, to give Tom authority to do administrative approval for the change in the parking spaces?
I move we give administrative approval to the town planner. For the specific change of the tree, saving the trees.
Yes. Okay, if we move in seconded, all in favor, show of hands, please. Okay, Charlotte, you're negative or abstaining?
He's mad.
So six, so six in favor, one in.
You feel good. I mean, that's your feelings. That's.
I'm not gonna get a nasty tweet, am I?
Tell me if you want one, Bob.
I think we should go back next year and see what it looks like.
Yeah. Okay, next, comments from the planning board on draft provisions to site plan bylaw. And I assume you've all seen them. I don't know how much time. John Druley suggested we move it to this week to give comments so that people could actually spend more time looking at them. Has anybody spent more time looking at them?
More time than before.
Not a lot anymore.
All right. Well, then I'm gonna just put my oar in the water on this one, because I've given a lot of thought to it. This is all in relationship to that first paragraph. And I think Michaela did an awesome job on looking at the suggestions by, from Bob Mitchell, and highlighting where changes could be made. I completely agree with increasing the gross floor area of 500 square feet or more that needs to be looked at. Change of use from one category to another within an existing institutional, commercial, or multifamily structure, because you approved it for one use, now you're changing the use, and addition of two or more parking spaces, a change to the layout or location of two or more parking space, and an increase in pavement of more than 300 square feet, or the alteration of any driveway. This takes away a lot of what has happened that we are having some heartburn with that we haven't any chance to look at beside plan review. There are some others, we're under Sudbury, there's another one. Construction or exterior expansion of or change of use within a municipal, institutional exempt, commercial, or industrial structure involving more than 500 square feet. So we're looking at 500 square feet as being a trigger point. Anything in excess of 500 square feet. And then we move on to Burlington. No structure or premises shall be constructed, reconstructed, altered, or used except in conformity with a site plan prepared by a professional land surveyor or registered professional engineer, or bearing an endorsement of approval by the planning board. And then another segment, when in the opinion of the planning board, the alteration or reconstruction of a structure does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties and structures, the planning board may determine without a public hearing that submission of a site plan is not required.
We including that language?
It's up to you to do it. I think maybe if we want to make it far more definitive, we should put that.
I would like to include the language that you just read. That's missing in my perspective.
Right. And here's another one that says similar to that. No change to building or site. A site plan review shall not be required when no physical change will occur to the exterior of either a building or site. I mean, when you put that one in, okay, change to the exterior, well, that takes away all kinds of different siding potentials. If it's a concrete building, concrete block building, and somebody wants to put a nice exterior on it, do we really want to put that part in? I don't think so. Anyway, what my feeling is, that I would like to suggest, is that we allow Michaela, perhaps not that last one, because that means you're not gonna get anything nicer looking if you can't, if that's prohibited. But the others use those to construct a new paragraph that goes in our site plan review that we can then look at. It's all, it's a whole lot easier when you've got something put together in front of you, Michaela, as you know, that you can then throw darts and arrows at, darts, I guess. You don't throw an arrow. So does this make sense to all of you? These are the ones that she ferreted out from what Bob Mitchell suggested. Bob?
Yeah, I, I, when you read Falmus bylaw, I, I have to read bylaws two or three times before I can get the gist of them and make sure I understand what I think I'm understanding. And part of it is, is we throw in the exemptions in the middle of everything. And what I like to see is the concise requirement of the bylaw, and then the exemptions after it, as opposed to sticking them in the middle, because, you know, it's, it's easy to miss an exemption if you, if it's in the middle of the, the, the text of the bylaw itself. And so I, I kind of was playing around with constructing a bylaw language from some of these others, and I, I, I like a lot of what you had to add to it, but I, I took, I think, Burlington's, one of them. Construction or exterior expansion of or change of use within a municipal, institutional exempt, commercial, or industrial structure involving more than 500 square feet or the addition of two or more parking spaces, must submit a site plan prepared by a professional land surveyor or registered professional engineer, and bearing an endorsement of approval by the planning board. And then I guess we could add, add to that, but I, I think it, it's nice and clear and concise.
Telling them what they have to do.
Right, right.
And John, you had a question or comment?
Yes, I'm, I'm not so sure. I like to see it every time there's a change of use. We have a lot of commercial property in this town, and just because the use changes, does that mean we, they have to come from the planning board with a design and go through this whole permitting process? It's, it's quite extensive, it can be very expensive, and we have a lot of small businesses here.
And you know, to tack on to John's comment, if we do move to form-based code, the use isn't gonna be an issue.
Right.
That's true.
Jim?
I think the most important thing in preserving neighborhood character is roof lines and fenestrations. And without having some comment, when somebody can add literally thousands and thousands of feet of roof line without planning boards say at all, it's a dangerous situation.
Okay, so I want to throw something back at you guys. What if we ask Michaela to actually construct something that we can have a closer look at instead of these pieces?
Yeah.
That would be.
That would be very helpful.
Cause I, I think she has a real sense for what we would be liking to look at. And I understand what John has said every time a usage changes. Was that critical or not? If the use changes, maybe the parking has to change. I don't, that's why I'm saying let Michaela put her thinking cap on. Are you all agreed to with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Michaela, assignment. And thank you. Thank you for all the work you've already put into it. And I think you'll do a fabulous job. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we'll put together a draft of the existing bylaw with these amendments to it and get it back to the board for your consideration.
And I would suggest also that when you look at the existing bylaw, as Bob said, he was playing around with the way it's written, not just that one paragraph. It may be that there are other things that should be clarified on it. I don't know. That I have not done my homework on. But on this one paragraph, it really kind of controls the rest of it, I think.
Yeah.
Well, as we know, the folks who have been working on the recodification have seen a lot of, uh, a, a, a lot of bad sentences.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully there'll be fewer. Hopefully there'll be fewer in the future.
Yes. So thank you. But while you're doing that, Michaela, take a look at the rest of the bylaw too, to see if it's kind of crazy and could be made simpler.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, spring 2020 town meeting articles review. Uh, the reason I asked for Tom to put that on is it's a long way from spring and there are a few articles that are coming up at town meeting. Um, and so I asked Tom to take, to do a review on that. I am not going to go to town meeting. I have asked Charlotte whether she would take my place in reading the recommendations and she has agreed to doing that. I just feel 250 people in one enclosed space is asking a little much for me and probably a lot of other people too.
And for now, non-town meeting members. You know,
That is also true.
I would normally go, but for the same reason, you're not going, I'm not going.
Right. And I'm not a town meeting member. It's just that I have a role as chairman of the planning board to present these things. And I asked Charlotte whether she was going. She said, of course. And so she is going and she has agreed to take my role at this town meeting.
Perfect.
Just, just to bring, um, us up to snuff as to what we have to be looking at for town meeting. And I believe Charlotte and Paul are the only two town meeting members on the board. So they may very well be the only two people who are attending. So the floor is yours, Tom. You gotta unmute, Tom. Tom, you're muted.
I, I knew that.
Thank you.
So, uh, so you, you should see on your screen, uh, some very small text.
Right.
So what, what the, the plan is, is every town meeting that we have, uh, I send out an email to town meeting members recapping the planning board's hearings. So in this case, we'll be sending out an email to town meeting members, uh, later this week with, uh, what the town planning board's actions were back from February, as well as this meeting with a link to the discussion. So they'll have an idea of what the articles are, what the discussion went with that. And hopefully it'll be pretty crystal clear. And I don't think there's anything just particularly controversial. I call, I shouldn't say that because that's almost a kiss to death. Uh, but just, and so we'll recap this tonight. Uh, there won't be any votes from the board because the hearing's already been closed. This is just what we did prior to. So article 19 is essentially about the senior center. Uh, we have a senior center, uh, uh, the former senior center that the veterans would like to use for, uh, their property. Except the senior center, uh, uh, wasn't built, uh, on a parcel that the town owned, was it built on the school's property? And it wasn't built with any zoning that allowed you to do that. They just built it. Uh, I don't want to say it's like seep it all over again, where people just built stuff wherever they wanted to, but uh, this is what we did. So we're trying to clear that up with the article 19. So that'll be to change the zoning map to rezone, uh, this parcel. And I'm going to bring you the map. So I get a little seasick as I scroll back and forth. So this is the map, uh, that will, it's in the town meeting booklets, the ones that'll be on the, uh, the screen as well. So this shows, uh, the, uh, parcel where the former senior center is at, uh, the home for the veterans, uh, uh, here. So we're rezoning this parcel, uh, 392105A from RC, uh, to, uh, public use. So that is article 19. Uh, article 21 is also a rezoning and this is a petition article from EDIC. Uh, in this particular one, we were looking at, uh, they were requesting to rezone parcel 150427A 021 at 64 Technology Park from public use to light industrial B. Uh, that petition article would allow them to, uh, essentially put solar on the area where the water tank is, including other uses that are permitted in there. But their primary motivation was for solar. So we're going to scroll down here and bring you to that, um, map as well. Sorry, I got a little too, uh, excited with my scrolling there. Uh, so this is, uh, 64 Technology Park. Uh, this is one parcel that's in the middle of all the other LIB that is zoned as public use. But the petition article would be to rezone, uh, this particular, uh, uh, parcel from, uh, uh, public use, uh, to LIB. Uh, the planning board voted favorable recommendations on all these previously. We'll get back to those in just a moment. Uh, and then so that was article 21. Article 22 is related to article 21. After they rezoned the property, uh, they would like to amend, uh, the Falmouth zoning code, uh, in light industrial districts to have under permitted businesses, commercial, industrial uses, add a ground mounted solar photo arrays. And under 24062 permitted accessory uses to add C ground mounted solar photovoltaic arrays as an accessory use. This petition article by EDIC, uh, would permit ground mounted solar as a principal and accessory use in the LIB district. And would include the parcel that was just rezoned. So it would be anywhere within, uh, the, uh, uh, the LIB zone. Uh, lastly, we have article 23, which is a street acceptance for William Road. William Road is a road that the town has owned, uh, for all these years, uh, and we are looking to make it a the town has owned the road, but it is a private way. So we're looking to accept that as a public way and make improvements to it to essentially pave it, uh, make it easier for the relatives, uh, the, the, the neighbors to get their street. Uh, and that was, uh, William Street. Here you see off of Quaker Road. Uh, the street goes here all the way to the back of the school property. We had a discussion about sidewalks back in the day. There's no sidewalks on Quaker Road. The school doesn't have an interest in having people access to school from the, uh, property from the back. So he accepted the road and essentially paved it. The selectmen voted the layout in March 9th of tw- of 2020. Uh, and so here's a couple of pictures with that familiar looking car you've seen in some of these other pictures before, what the existing road looks like coming in, leaving. The DPW's recommendation was, uh, to approve the layout of William, uh, Road by the Board of Selectmen by taking, uh, the easements by eminent domain for public purposes for the road, uh, including about 1,332 square feet in order to make the turning radiuses a little better. Uh, Williams Road runs from Quaker Road, as I mentioned, to the back of North Falmouth School. And the planning board's, uh, draft recommendation at the time was the board supports the acceptance of the road and the subsequent improvements to upgrade the road for the residents and the water treatment plant at the end of the road. Williams Road is one of those things that was created prior to subdivision regulations. There's been no inspections by the town, uh, or, or, or the planning board on this. If we have a road that we've, uh, worked through subdivision control, the planning board pretty much knows what the road is, has been constructed. And in this case, the road predates subdivision regulations. So we're, uh, we don't have a, a specific recommendation because we don't really know what, how the road was constructed. But the DPW, we've essentially, uh, putting the road in per the subdivision regulations as far as the, uh, the sub base, the pavement, uh, to that effect. And so be happy to take any questions that the board might have on, uh, our town meeting recap.
Does anybody have any questions on this? Jim?
I just want to comment, uh, an excellent job on the presentation on this COVID system. You've actually got these showing things on screen here pretty clear. I could see and read everything you said very quickly. That was a, a really good job. You've gotten good at it.
Thank you. I've been practicing.
Yeah.
Paul? Unmute? Yeah.
One, uh, minor addition, if I may. Uh, the second line says upgrade the road for the residents and the wastewater treatment plan. I think we mean the residents and the access.
We can't change it now. Okay. So my reason for wanting to bring this up is to refresh the board's memory, but also there are people who are town meeting members who do watch us and that is to refresh them as well as to why we voted as we did. Okay?
As I said, later this week, we'll have an email out to all the town meeting members with, uh, these particular zoning articles attached to them when the planning board discussed them. So folks can, uh, review the record at their leisure and hopefully there'll be questions at town meeting.
Okay. Moving on. Uh, Brick Hill Village 40B referral to ZBA. Paul and Charlotte and I met with Tom and the developer out there today and had an explanation of what's going on. And you have a packet of information to have looked at, um, one of which includes, um, the, our referral to Mr. Busby um, at Mass Housing. And the ZBA would very much like our referral now, so that they get some time to look at it. My own feeling is that we should forward exactly what had been sent to Mr. Busby. That gives them a lot of detailed information. I am hoping that you all look through your packet to see what we had forwarded. Okay, Pam's nodding her head. I don't know about anybody else. Um, in going out there today, still my prime concern is the water quality of our main drinking water source, Long Pond. It's too close. They have two, uh, septic system areas that are plotted. And I had asked if whether they could be combined into one as far back on the property as they can put it because you've got greater filtration before it actually hits Long Pond. Um, that would require a reconfiguration. The selectmen, in case a lot of you haven't looked at this, I'm sorry if I'm repeating things that you don't need to hear, but the selectmen had indicated, although they thought it was a great place for this development, um, they wondered whether some of the buildings could be made into duplexes. And the developer's comment was he wanted it to be separate houses. So each could have their own little garden plot and so on. And it would be, they'd own their own piece of property there. There would probably be a homeowners association because they'd have to have joint control of the septic systems. The, the main treat, the two main treatment septic systems. Um, and Charlotte and Paul, please, I'd like to call on you to give your own comments. Charlotte, you want to go first? Yeah, Charlotte.
About the possibility we, we discussed while we're there on the, on the site, the added expense of adding a denitrification system. And it was the sense of the developer that it's a very substantial uh, added expense that it would cut his profits by 45%. Um, and, and that, if that's true, that certainly is a lot. But it is close to Long Pond. And I think as we, uh, going forward to the ZBA, it would be good for us to have recommended that it be a denitrification uh, system. I, I really, um, don't go along with the idea of the duplexes. I think that creating uh, villages around, uh, Little Greens, which is the concept of the development makes it a much more attractive, uh, development. So it'd be good to keep that, but to, uh, denitrify this system. It is a good location for, for this kind of a development.
And Paul? Did you wish to say something about the visit?
I thought it was a little bit of a dense development there. There is some issues at the beginning and there's some topography issues. They do have access to, uh, to the high school in the back that they've opened up, but it is a pretty, pretty tight spot. And I'm thinking back to the, uh, to the, uh, housing development we had previously where they knocked down 12 to 10 units. And here's 32 units on a small lot. Uh, I think it's pretty dense. I think they could do it. It is a 40B, so they could do a lot of, a lot of work there. I don't know, the concept about one treatment plant is, uh, is interesting. I don't know if they can do that or not. What concerned me, uh, today is that they were talking about putting a water stub coming off property right in the middle in this, in this below the picture there for the YMCA. And I didn't know the YMCA was moving along next door to that. Perhaps Tom can give us a brief update of what's going on during the returning property.
Paul, could you speak louder? Paul? Can't hear you.
Paul at all.
If you turn your own volume up, you can hear him better.
My volume's up as high as it goes.
I don't have trouble hearing anybody else, but Paul has just disappeared vocally.
So if I could, uh, just talk about Paul's comments for a second, uh, so uh, I have been, uh, on the meeting with the YMCA facilities committee for about a year now. Uh, and we first talked about this, uh, 40B. Uh, I wanted to make sure that we were having those same discussions about impact to the site with both the 40B and the Y. Uh, so I've explained to the YMCA, uh, that while that denitrifying septic system is not required uh, for their development, uh, I think the town would very much like to see something like that. So it's in the mix of their discussions at the YMCA. Uh, in the case of, uh, this particular, uh, 40B developers we talked about on the site, um, he's having a conventional septic system would be, uh, uh, leaching fields here in, uh, this circle and here in this second circle here. Uh, there was discussion about looping the water main. So the water main would come in and go onto the YMCA site in order to have better water flow, uh, for the area. Um, here to there, uh, the discussion about whether you could tie into the sewer system is moot at this point because it's not in the sewer service area and to include something in the service sewer service area is present not in it is, uh, uh, like, uh, sort of an act of Congress to try to create something like that. So uh, they're on their own with onsite septic, uh, in these two areas here.
Now Mike Borselli, I believe, has, um, Tom did something sort of like a quick and dirty and it was 900 and some odd feet from Long Pond. Mike Borselli is saying it's 1,400 and something feet from Long Pond. It should be at least 2,000 to have sufficient soil absorption. Um, many, many, many years ago, when they first built the high school, it was, what were they thinking? Well, they didn't understand. And before they connected the high school to the sewer, there was impingement on Long Pond. There was algal growth on the shoreline. Um, I'm concerned very, very much because if you get the Y there, you get a 32 unit housing development there. Sure, we've got this beautiful new treatment facility and yeah, you can make fresh water out of saltwater. But should we be putting that kind of density there without requiring the necessities to protect our water supply? Uh, the other thing is too, that one of our housing needs requirements is that they be close to amenities, close to public transportation. And that is not true out there. We did not bring that up with the developer. He can't do anything about the property and he wants to develop it in that manner. So Jim?
I've always had the same two concerns. That our local comprehensive plan, when we're building something like this, we're going to be changing our villages. We're creating a new little village. It's not on the sewer and it doesn't have public transportation. Those are really important parts of our local comprehensive plan. And I think if we start ignoring it, we're going to throw it away. And we won't, if we don't hang, if we don't defend it, it won't be there anymore. And for those two reasons, I can't support this.
So now we come to how do we refer? What kind of a referral do we give to the ZBA? First, I do think that Tom should forward what he sent to Mike, help me, Tom, of Mass Housing.
Mike Busby.
Thank you, Mike Busby of Mass Housing. So that they get the full impact of that, because he went into a lot of these things that we had said before, and that's quite a while ago. But I also think another sending to the ZBA, part of the referral should be the comments we've been making tonight. Because they are, are made more concise tonight, I believe. What does the board feel about that?
I agree. But we ought to make sure how far it is from Long Pond.
Pardon?
We ought to, we ought to be sure of the distance, we're going to say of the distance from Long Pond.
If we cite a specific distance, Charlotte?
It should be an exact distance. And I think that it would be very good to include in the letter the experience with the, the high school when, before the filtration plant was there.
I'd have to go way back, probably 30, 40 years ago, and get that dredged out of my husband's files. And that I'm not going to be willing to do. It was there. It had started to put algae growth in the pond.
And nothing has changed in those 25 or 30 years?
No, the high school has gotten connected to the sewer. Once there's a sewer.
No, I understand.
It clears up.
Well, that and the filtration plant for the Long Pond was.
Oh, absolutely.
Big change.
So just the fact that it's too close to Long Pond, it is going to affect our water supply. And various engineers do know that. But you can treat anything. So, yes, Jim?
I just, and when, and the times that I spent working on Davis Straits became, came clear that the cost of a car is $8,000 a year. And to build affordable housing, which people can barely afford in order to have a job and they don't have public transportation, and we put it out here. I just don't think it's the right thing to do. And that, that isn't my number. I think if you go to the Cape Cod Commission and check on what a cost of, the average cost of a car is, that's a lot of money. And we're putting these people out there with no way to get to work. They're all going to have cars. That's not an affordable place to live.
Okay, so if I were to summarize what we're saying tonight, and please feel free to jump in and change any of this. Bad location for multiple reasons. The housing production plan calls for it to be towards the center of town and on the sewer, where there are amenities present, including transportation and shopping and schools and libraries.
I think that's the local comprehensive plan that does that, not the housing production.
The housing production plan, I think, also calls for that too, Jim. So I think we've got, I think Pam, you could speak to that better than I can.
Well, whenever you look at affordable housing, you want to make it so that the amenities, I mean, that's part of the whole 40B process, what gets to be a 40B. And you can't have something stuck out in, you know, Never Neverland, where there is no transportation, you can't walk to shopping, you can't walk to a job. I mean, that, you know, why would you do that to people? You know, who are maybe struggling to begin with, and now they get into housing that they can just afford. And I think Jim is correct to then add on having to have a car is just, it flies in the face of anything that's reasonable. So, but the rest of it, it isn't all affordable housing.
Right. But I think. Units that are affordable.
Right. And that's a sizable chunk that we want to accommodate folks that will be moving in there. You know, where they can walk and they can access. I mean, we have so many people here in town that rely on their bikes to get to work. And I think it's very difficult. And I think we have to be really sensitive to the populations that we want to help out the most.
Well, when you put it in this place too, remember it's going to be a private road and the town's decision has been you've got to take care of your own plowing and upkeep of your street. And so there's that factor too, the expense of upkeep at a homeowners association. Bob?
I was going to mention that as, as well, but I agree with you. It's too close to the water. The housing production plan also says that we need more rental units.
Exactly.
Home ownership. We're creating more homeownership, but not the rental units that we need.
You're exactly right.
So are you, are you getting this down, Tom, into something that you can reasonably put forward?
I am, I've been taking notes to go along here. So I just want to, I, I just did another measurement from Long Pond Road, from Long Pond to the property. So from the edge of Long Pond to the edge of the property on Brick Hill Road is 2,236 feet.
Oh.
The, the distance from the edge of Long Pond Road to the approximate location for the septic system is 2,747 feet. Now let's throw that up on the screen here.
Why is that so different from the one that you did a long time ago?
Well, it, it, it may be how we recall things, because obviously it, it didn't move.
Should measure from over here. You're measuring from the wrong spot.
Well, where I'm measuring from, give me just a second here to, that's 511 Brick Hill Road right there. Where my car is at.
But that's not the closest part of Long Pond.
Well, all right, so we'll do another one here.
There's a little notch to the left.
I'm going there.
Give it a chance, Jim.
Because I measured it too, and I didn't get the same number he did.
I got 17,000 or. I got 1763 from that closest corner of 511 to that notch there.
Shouldn't it be from the closest corner of the septic system rather than the lot?
Yeah, so, so that's, so that's what this 2,700 number is right here, where I sort of scaled from the approximate location of that first septic field.
Yep.
That's this line.
Just if you take that line over to the notch.
All right. It's going to look like one of those hurricane models.
Yeah.
So now you've got 22.
The European model.
That's 2,257.
Okay, then I would have to withdraw that objection to it. He had said that Mike Borselli said 1,454 feet, I think.
Well, I think that the, the general discussion with, with the YMCA and with them previously is that because of its proximity to the water service, I, I think that aspirationally, it would be great if it was a nitrogen-reducing septic system. Or in the case of the discussion we had with the, 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 the water quality folks, Mr. Kerfoot, Dr. Kerfoot, Bill Kerfoot was.
You guys know him, so.
Yeah, you know, the, the phosphates and other things that travel along there as well.
Right.
I think, you know, it's perfectly fine to reference. Wouldn't it be great if we had? But as we talked about before, those sort of things, the additional cost for a nitrogen septic system may render the project uneconomic, which is basically an easy thing for the Housing Appeals Committee to look at and strike down and says, the ZBA has created a condition that renders the project uneconomic. So that's low hanging fruit for HAC. But I think it's still a perfectly appropriate comment to put in there. So I have the local, the LPC notes, locations for housing. The HPP references rental units. I will say that there are 22 bedroom units in this development. There are 12 three-bedroom units. We don't usually see a lot of two-bedroom units. So to their credit, they did listen to us about two-bedroom units. I had a number of conversations with Mr. Solomondo about rental. In fact, we went back and forth for over a couple of months. And he went out and talked to a few different builders about the rental aspect of things. And frankly, it's about the rents. Because the rents that we get in Falmouth, while impressive enough from our perspective, makes it hard for the pro-fomer to work on the developer side, especially when you consider that eight of those units aren't going to be those market rate rents. So very difficult getting the rents to underwrite the cost of that project when you consider the ongoing cost of maintaining the property, maintaining those annual reviews for the renters to make sure they still comply with the rental requirements. Because we sell a lot, that person has to qualify the date of the closing. But with a rental, that's an annual review to make sure the people who are in those units haven't, you know, struck pay dirt and are now living in a subsidized unit when they don't qualify income-wise. So I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I had a lot of conversations with Mike Solomondo about trying to make this thing work. And to his credit, he put a pencil to paper and tried to make those things happen. But still, I think it's perfectly appropriate to note the HPP notes the need for rental units. And in our big picture scenario, you may just have to look at, if we want rental units, we may be needing to increase the subsidy that the town's willing to give to make those things happen at some point in the future. And I'm going to stop sharing this so we can see each other again.
Okay, John? Take yourself off mute, John.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Has it been determined which way the groundwater flows from that development?
It has.
Does it flow to the pond or does it flow to the ocean or?
It will generally go towards the pond. The pond, the pond has a drawdown, John, which pulls it.
Well, I'm sure it has a drawdown, but I'm sure we also have maps somewhere that shows which way the groundwater flows. And also nitrites really don't have any impact on drinking water.
In this case, it's phosphorus.
Has anyone asked, I didn't get to the meeting today, I'm sorry, but has anyone asked Mr. Solomondo if he's actually going to develop this property or is he going to sell it like he did the last one he got approved in the town of Falmouth?
We didn't ask him. Have you asked him that, Tom?
I have not.
And if he does rentals, the town has a very substantial subsidy program. Very substantial. And that's it.
So do you want to have that as part of our referral to the ZBA? And put in the town has a substantial rental subsidy? Should he be willing to go in that direction, which I don't believe he is?
That would be fine with me. I don't think he's going to do rentals anyway, but.
So are you all agreed that part of this referral to the ZBA should be the original sending to Mass Housing? Because that incorporated a lot of this, most of it, I believe. And with backup materials as well. Bob?
I just wonder, is there any way the town could purchase the eight affordable units and then rent them out?
Except the town doesn't want to become a landlord.
Right.
Well, we are a landlord. The town has property that is rental already.
The buyer's road.
Yeah. Yeah, we got 40 units there.
It's true.
Plus Scranton Ave. You know, there's, there's numerous properties that the town rents out.
John?
I think the best solution is for the planning board to have a very substantial multifamily bylaw that gets approved by town meeting. Then you'll see the apartments get built.
I think you're absolutely right.
And, and you'll see, you'll see the real defense against 40Bs being built in this town. Right now, there isn't any defense. Right now, it's an open door policy.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, we're still having to do the ZBA referral. Do you all agree that the original sending to Mass Housing should be forwarded as part of our referral to the ZBA?
Wouldn't it depend on what it says about the distance from Long Pond? Now that we know more about that actual distance?
It didn't actually say the distance in it. Yes, John and Jim?
I, I just went to GPS and did the same thing Tom did. I came up with 1,800 feet, not, you know, less than 2,000. So maybe we should have an engineer do it.
I got 1954 on the ones that I did in January 2020.
Then we can just make it more general and say that it is our concern that it is too close. Less than 2,000, it is our concern that it is too close to our main drinking water supply.
The reason why I brought it up is Virginia, when we were doing the accessory apartment bylaw, she made it really hard for us to put an accessory apartment within 2,000 feet.
Correct.
Of a body of saltwater, not a drinking water.
Correct.
And that was for one year.
And I don't believe the referral to Mass Housing said anything about the number of feet to the drinking water supply, just that it was our concern that it was too close to our main drinking water supply.
I just wondered if it changed our own thinking.
No. It's too close to our main drinking water supply, particularly also when you consider that this is where the Y wants to locate. And so we're getting more and more and more development right above Long Pond.
So specifically in the letter of, to Mike Busby, January 30th, 2020, the board does not feel as though this is an appropriate location without tying into the sewer system or installing an innovative alternative septic system that's capable of treating phosphorus and nitrogen to acceptable levels identified by the Cape Cod Commission to protect the main water supply for the town of Falmouth. We included in that language from the LCP, language from HPP, as well as the fact that Long Pond is a surface water system that provides 50 to 60% of the town's water supply.
John?
In those attachments, we did have a, a copy of the map that had 1,964 as the, 1,954 is the distance, or the point to point to get to the pond.
Okay, in my copy, I could not read the one in front of it. So it looked like 900 and something, Tom.
I support, I support the referral letter to be sent to the, the same letter be sent to the zoning board of appeals.
I agree.
Okay, show of hands on that, please.
I got one more comment.
What, Jim?
We keep, we keep saying nitrogen and phosphates, but wastewater has a lot more components in it. There should be, I think they're even more important. And if you, because they can cancel those two out. But what about all the chemicals from drugs and everything?
Correct.
And, and, you know, there's tons of stuff we're dumping in to that. We don't even know what the effects are.
We've just been finding out the effects.
We're just learning it. It's, it's not the right thing to do.
No.
So it should be all wastewater, not limited to nitrate and phosphates, because that makes them real easy to fix. Oh, we'll put in a denitrification system or we'll put in a phosphate. What about the things we can't filter out right now?
The endocrine disruptors.
Endocrine, all kinds of things.
Recently, yeah. So I don't think we should refer to it as nitrogen reducing.
Or phosphate, wastewater.
It would be the IA, Innovative and Alternative. And the best one that can be had at that point. But I don't think that's going to fly in any case, but let's put it in. And I think that's what Tom had in the letter is IA systems.
Correct.
So may I see a show of hands for sending that letter to the ZBA as our referral, please? Okay, there are one, two, three, four, five. Did you raise your hand, Paul? No? Okay, so there are five of us in favor of it. And are you abstaining, Bob and Paul, or what?
Just a question, this is a referral in favor of this?
We're not saying in favor, they want a referral to them from the planning board.
Just a referral? Yeah, okay, I'm in.
Okay. But you would say yes or, I mean, if it were, yes, we support it or no, we don't, but.
It would be no.
And it is no, I know. And maybe we should send this and have a cover letter saying, no, we don't support it, plain and simple.
Yeah.
Okay, but let's get this. Paul, are you in favor of sending the mass housing referral to the ZBA?
Before I say that, I, I have another question because in the packet here is a letter from the town, Julian Tussell, supporting the project.
Yeah, it does before it even came to us.
Yeah, that's not ours, Paul.
They sent that before they even came to the planning board. They just set that automatically.
I'm just making a statement that they, they.
Oh, yeah, I know.
No, that's, we're not sending that. We're only sending our letter that we sent to Mr. Busby.
Right.
So right now I've got six saying, yes, send it. Paul, do you want to support sending that or no?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so seven of us are in favor of that. Now, we're going to do that. Do you want to put an additional cover on top of that? That is more explicit without all the explanatory notes behind it saying, no, we are not in favor of it?
No.
No. Just send that referral that we sent to mass housing.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want, Tom, to put something on top of it in relationship to what we were just discussing tonight? That it does not comport with the LCP, with the, all the principles of.
As long as the letter we send to Busby contains all our objections to it as well as.
Right.
It does.
We don't need to be redundant by sending an additional.
Okay.
As long as it lists all our concerns. And.
It does, Bob, and it gives all the backup information too.
Yeah, and that's fine.
So just send that as our referral.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, fine. Thank you. So let's move on. Brick Kiln Village 40B, we just did that. Future agendas for pending applications. Well, one of those things I would like to bring up is that, um, Melinda sent out a question, do we want to have a meeting on the 29th, which would be our third meeting for the month? That specifically we limit to no more than an hour and a half. And in this particular situation, I would think it would cover the multifamily housing if the subcommittee comes up with something substantial enough to be able to bring up for that meeting. That we can.
In favor of meeting?
You are or not, Bob?
I am.
You are.
I'm not going anywhere Tuesday nights.
Okay, you're in favor of it, Jim? Pam? I assume you are, John. Okay. Paul, you're in favor or no? Okay, so seven out of seven, so that's the 29th. Okay, Tom?
Ready, and we'll likely have an update on recodification. I got an email from Frank Duffy today about the, the process and where we're at, the discussions we had with the Attorney General's Office, or at least that Bob and Bob have had with the Attorney General's Office on the status of the changes that we're looking at. So I've talked to Frank and asked him if he was available at the beginning of the meeting to sit in with us as well. So likely we would have, uh, recodification and the multifamily bylaw on for 9/29.
Okay. Thank you. Um, are there any announcements tonight? Okay. I have no general correspondence that I know of. It was not included in my packet.
Question.
Pardon?
Pam sneezed. I said question.
No, I didn't. I actually didn't. I just yawned.
Okay.
I just want to be very clear.
And I don't know about future agenda items. I think we've already been piling them on for the 22nd. Do we have any others, Tom, that we should be aware of?
We have an accessory housing unit, uh, coming up as well, uh, for, uh, the 22nd as well.
Okay. So our next meeting is the 22nd and at this point at 8:45, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good job.